Called September 23rd, 2019, City Council Committee, a whole meeting in order. The court called a roll.
Borowitz, Rirtin.
Here.
Crawford.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Aldman Freeman will be absent. McGee.
Here.
Porter.
Here.
Radcliffe.
Here.
Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Under public comment this evening, we have no one signed up to speak. Under public forum, we have no public forum. Under reports of officers, boards, and special committees, it gives me great pleasure. We are offering a proclamation for Bravehearts Trail to Zero Day. And Marshall Wolf, who is a retired U.S. United States Marine Corps vet and on the staff of Bravehearts, will come up to accept the proclamation. Marshall?
Thank you. Very cool.
Proclamation. Whereas Bravehearts is the nation's leading equine rehabilitation program for veterans, and whereas Trail to Zero is a 20-mile horseback ride that commemorates the number of veteran lives lost on an average day to suicide. And whereas Bravehearts Trail to Zero not only brings awareness to veteran suicide, but also helps the veterans on the ride to heal and advance their horsemanship, and whereas here at the city of Belvidere, we respect, admire, and support the efforts of the Bravehearts organization, and now therefore be it resolved that I, Mike Chamberlain, as Mayor of the city of Belvidere, do hereby proclaim September 28th, 2019, to be Trail to Zero Day in Belvidere, and encourage all residents to recognize the issues and work together to stand behind Bravehearts Trail to Zero. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Belvidere to be affixed this 23rd day of September, 2019. This is for you, and I thought you might like to share with the folks a little bit about what you do and about Trail to Zero, if you wouldn't mind.
I'd like to do that, Mike. That'd be awesome. Some of my brothers and sisters are here with us. I started a few years back. I lost my job. Didn't have nowhere to go. I found Bravehearts. I rode up there with a motorcycle club. They were a veterans' organization that I had no idea was even there. It's equine therapy. We have so many guys out there that go through the system and come out to our barns, both in Poplar Grove and Harvard, and they have no other options. And with the horse therapy, you see the light switch come on. You know, those guys are looking down that tunnel, and they see the train, they see the light at the end of the tunnel, and it's the train coming back at them. And it's not only the younger guys that are out there, it's the old guys like me, you know, in their 50s and 60s, you know, alcohol, depression, just life in general. And the equine therapy has brought me from ground zero, where we just rode to New York City and Washington, and now we're doing Chicago on Saturday, to realize that we need to be a community and give back to the veterans and people that support our whole nation. It's a moving thing. If you ever get a chance, you're welcome to come to Bravehearts and be a part of it. I'm an instructor. Like I said, I lost my job, and I just got hired on. I'm a staff member out there. I'm an instructor, and I ride and just love what I'm doing for everybody in the community. It's been a real great thing. I could go for hours and hours talking about it, and I know a lot of people in this room right now, and I appreciate your support. This is a way cool thing. I know we have, in the military, we have challenge coins. And challenge coins are part of your unit's designation. I know the fire department, the police department, and now we ride with the mounted units all over. We're going to Houston in November. There's over 24 states of mounted horsemen that ride and support and protect and first responders. You know, we really want to start working for the first responders, all the veterans that are out there, and let everybody know that we're a community and everything. But this challenge coin, you give it as a unit presentation. When you go to the bar, you throw your coin down, and if that guy doesn't have that coin, he buys the drinks and stuff. Not that you have to do this, Mike, but we're...
I'm not paying attention to the horses here.
Mike, Bravehearts would like to present this to you from the staff and the organization. Here's your challenge coin. Don't be without it. You're gonna owe me one, brother. Thanks for the... Oh, wait, I'll take the money. There's amber right there. We've got donations. Come out and volunteer. Come out and check out the barn. Just be a part, you know. We have leaders, sidewalkers. Even if you don't want to get on a horse, you can come on out and just be a part of the whole program. It's not only just the veterans. It's clinical therapy, special needs, autistic speech therapy. You know, Poplar Grove is more of our clinical operation. Get out to Harvard, which is actually Chalhoun. We take a left at the mobile station, head up Maxim Road, and get out to that barn and all new fences and the Mustangs. See Operation Mustang. We've adopted wild Mustangs out there, and we've gentled them, and they're in the program right now. To make that latch, and to see a veteran come in or somebody that needs that special attachment just to make a bond with a horse, and it's nonverbal communication. You know, it's reading the eyes, and seeing the soft eyes, and matching that heartbeat. Horses match our heartbeat, and then tell that veteran that when he goes back to the hospital, goes back to Milwaukee or Chicago, that, hey, what you learned here, what you have as horsemanship skills, and the people's skills, no one can take away from you. And then they can go to Harvard any time of the day. That's a big thing for a lot of guys, you know. They come back, and you don't want to be part of society. You just want to get into yourself, and if you don't get out, it makes a big difference. What the horses do instead of the drugs and everything else, it opens a whole other door, a whole other life for everybody. These guys are testing for you right here. All these guys, the amber, and everybody at Braveheart. So, it's just up the street. I didn't realize it was there until three, six years ago. So, it's a really cool thing. I'm blessed. So, thank you again. This is special. Thank you, Bill.
You won't find a more worthwhile way to spend some time than volunteering at Bravehearts, I guarantee you. Next, we have Chief Woody, and it's that time of year where the Alliance Against Intoxicated Motorists recognition of our officers occurs. Chief? And Art and Kelly Krenzer, who come and share with us every year. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Wow, we got a group. It's good to see the support, not only officers that are being recognized tonight, but the shift on duty, as well as some of the off-duty officers and sergeants are here as well. I just wanted to introduce Art and Kelly Krenzer. They are associated with AIM, the Alliance Against Intoxicated Motorists, and Kelly has come to share one of her stories and present these certificates to the officers tonight. So, Kelly?
Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly Krenzer. Most of you on the council, Mr. Mayor, know myself and my husband, and a lot of the Belvidere police officers know us. For those of you that do not know us, we are part of the community. We live in Garden Prairie, and our 20-year-old son was killed nine years ago by a drunk driver, by a repeat drunk driver. It's been nine years, and we are humbled that we are continually asked back to present this award to the Belvidere Police Department. AIM has been around for a very long time. The Alliance Against Intoxicated Motorists was something that my husband and I did not know about when our son was killed. I can say kudos to our veterans who are in the program that was just presented right before us. They found their purpose with equine therapy. I didn't know, and my husband didn't know, that we also were going to find our purpose after our son was killed. And our purpose became speaking about impaired driving. I am now a advocate that is here in Boone County. I speak on victim impact panels all throughout our counties. I support victims of impaired driving crashes, distracted driving crashes, and I do events like this. I do community-based events to honor our police. And I don't think that we offer our gratitude to our police enough, and our fire department, and our EMTs. And this is why it's important, and we're always humbled when we're invited back here to present to our officers, because the job that they do, they are never going to get the thank yous for taking impaired drivers off the roads. But my husband and I are always here to thank them, because they're taking impaired drivers off the roads, and the community is not getting that terrible phone call that my husband and I got that night, nine years ago, when Chris was killed. Our community doesn't know the job that these guys do behind us. They're not thanked enough. It's always my honor, my privilege to read these names off as top cops and to give AIM awards. I'd like to start today with Joseph McDermott, who has a number of 15 DUI arrests this year.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have Officer Corn also with 15 DUI arrests this year. Officer Garcia with 11 DUI arrests this year. And Officer Joseph Danielak with 11 DUI arrests this year. Last year, actually, my husband and I were not here for the presentation due to a family thing that I had going on, but the year before, we were here. And I remember Officer Danielak, who was a rookie at that time, and I'm very proud to stand here and hand him, read off his name, I should say, read off that name to inspire him, you know, to take DUI drivers off the road. So, I'm very pleased to read his name on this. I'm gonna be turning it over to you, I believe.
I believe so.
Okay.
Thank you. I'd like to just say a few words on behalf of all of us here. I'd like to thank the city and the police department, and especially the folks at AIM, for coming out and giving us these awards. Like I said, I think I speak on behalf of all of us when I say that, you know, it's not just about getting the award every year. It's about making sure that people get home safe, and, you know, at the end of the day, our goal is voluntary compliance with the law, but some people choose not to do that. So, you know, we go out there every day, for me, and for the rest of these guys' night, and go out there to, you know, make sure everybody gets home safely. Obviously, getting behind the wheel intoxicated, whether it's on alcohol or other drugs, is statistically very dangerous and not safe, and it leads to injury and death on the roadways, which is very unfortunate, and nobody deserves to experience that by any means. So, you know, we'd like to say thank you for the reassurance that we're doing the right thing, because usually the people that we deal with are not happy that we're taking them, you know, off the street and preventing them from getting home that night, you know, which is a smaller issue compared to the whole bigger picture there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I would just like to thank Art and Kelly once again. And DUI enforcement is something that our department emphasizes, among other things, every year, and I just want to commend these officers for their commitment to that enforcement. And this recognition is just a token of our appreciation. So, thanks, guys. Thank you.
Next up, we have Fred Lance from Sickich to give us an update and an overview of our city audit for the year. Come on up, Fred.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of Sickich LP, I'd like to thank the mayor and the members of the council for inviting me here this evening to present the information resulting from our audit of the city as of the full year fiscal year ended April 30th, 2019. As a result of our audit, we have issued five documents. I believe three or four of those are before you for your review and approval this evening. We have the annual financial report, which is the thickest of the documents before you, and it's always a good sign that that's the thickest of the documents before you. We also have the report on compliance with Public Act 85-1142. That's for compliance with the TIF districts. You have two active TIF districts that require what we call an examination of compliance to be submitted to the state of Illinois. We're very pleased to report to the mayor and the members of the city council that both of the TIFs passed with flying colors for their compliance examination to send to the state of Illinois and share with the joint review boards. We've also issued our communication with members of the city council that's before you, and our management letter for posting on the city's website. Last but certainly not least, the last report that you don't have before you this evening is the state comptroller annual financial report that's required to be filed electronically with the state comptroller's office, and that was filed on your behalf to consummate that. What I thought I'd do, Mr. Mayor, is briefly review the annual audit report and address any questions that yourself or any members of the council might have in regards to these documents. I was told to do my best to try and keep it under an hour this evening, if...
We'd appreciate it.
If you'll turn with me, in the thicker of the documents, again, it's titled Annual Financial Report on the cover, and if you turn with me to page number one, your report grew by another 20 pages this year, so it's now in excess, when you look at the way that the pages are paginated, it's in excess of 150 pages. We're responsible as auditors for two pages in this report. The rest is the responsibility of the city and the city administration, and you all do a very, very good job at maintaining your books and records throughout the year and enabling us to perform the audit. So, if you're with me on page number one, please note that the audit covers your government activities, your business-type activities, the discreetly presented component unit, which is the public library, each major fund, as well as the aggregate remaining fund information. Under management responsibilities, we do note that you all are responsible for these financial statements, and again, you do a good job in establishing those policies and procedures necessary to prepare these financial statements. Under auditor's responsibility, we note that we're responsible for issuing an opinion on these financial statements. Please note, we added one section to this this year. Your audit was required to be performed under what we call generally accepted auditing standards, and also you'll note that new sentence there, also in accordance with government auditing standards this year. That was as a result of the state requirement now with the Grant Accountability and Transparency Act, where you have to prepare and publish your state, what they call a cipher, comprehensive year-end financial report, and it's actually included on page 128 of this document now. So, because you expended greater than $500,000 in combined state and federal restricted dollars, we are required to perform the audit in accordance with generally accepted government auditing standards, and as we'll see in a moment, that means you got an extra opinion in your financial statements in the current year. The city did expend less than $750,000 in total federal financial assistance, so you are not required to undergo a single audit of federal expenditures, just this new special audit required by the state of Illinois. I think as members of the council, what you're most interested in is on the top of page number two. The top of page number two starts our opinion. We're very pleased to present to the mayor and the members of the city council a clean, unmodified opinion on your financial statements. Our opinion notes that your financial statements present fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and that they're free of any material misstatement. Please note the paragraph right below that. There was a change in accounting principle. Some of you might recall us discussing this last year at the committee meeting. We did note that this year, you were going to have to record a larger liability for what we call retiree health insurance, the other post-employment benefit plan liability for the city. The city did implement that in the current year. That was the implementation of GASB Statement Number 75, and as we'll see in a moment, that did cause your total liabilities to increase by about $8 million in the last fiscal year, pretty much right along the lines of what we anticipated from that implementation. The rest of page number two just notes that we provide opinions on pretty much everything else that's included in the report with one exception. If you turn with me to the next page, page number three, you'll note a very new paragraph on the bottom of page three, other reporting required by government auditing standards, and that just notes that we do issue a separate report now in accordance with government auditing standards. And in order to close the loop on that, if you turn to the next page, page four, that is the separate report now in accordance with government auditing standards. Anytime we perform an audit in accordance with government auditing standards, we're required to give some information on the overall internal control over financial reporting, which is what you see on the bottom of page four, and then a little bit of information on compliance with laws, regulations, and grants that could have a material impact on the city's financial statements. If you look on page four, we're very pleased to report that we did not have any material deficiencies related to the city that we had to communicate as part of our, in accordance with government auditing standards. We did have a material weakness at the library, but the library was not subject to generally accepted government auditing standards, only the city was, so we did not have to include the library information as part of this opinion here. If you turn to the next page, on compliance and other matters, we're very pleased to report to the mayor and the city council that the results of our tests disclose no instances of noncompliance or other matters that are required to be reported under generally accepted government auditing standards. So, you have a clean bill of health under generally accepted auditing standards, and a clean bill of health now under the new set of standards this year with generally accepted government auditing standards. From there, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn two pages to page MDNA 1. I know this is a very lengthy, very complex document. If you get through nothing else in this document, if you get through the 13 pages that are paginated on the bottom with MDNA and a page number, I think you'll get through the best part of the report. This is written by your chief financial officer, and while myself and our audit team, we really like numbers, this is written more for layperson's terminology and really helps you all understand what happened with the numbers in the current year and why did they change from last year. So, if you get through nothing else in the report, if you can get through that management discussion and analysis, I think you'll find that to be very, very useful. More importantly, as you meet with residents, as you meet with taxpayers, voters, or anyone who's interested in the city's finances, you do put this up on the website after it's approved by the council. We encourage you to turn those folks, turn their attention to the website, to this report, but most importantly, those 13 pages for the management discussion and analysis. Really, really, very well-written, and even better, it has some great charts and graphs to help tell the financial story of the city for this last year. So, personally, I would consider it required reading, Mr. Mayor, for just about any city council member, but certainly to share with the residents. I think they'll find it to be very, very useful information. I'm going to skip past all of those pages that are paginated with an MDNA on the bottom of them. So, if you flip with me, you'll go past page MDNA 13, you'll come to a blank page or two, and then if you flip past those, you'll come to a regular page number six. Regular page number six now is the start of the city's financial statements. This is what we call a statement of net position, which is a consolidated financial statement for the city as a whole. You might recall our discussion in the past, we noted that this is prepared in what we call the Economic Resources Measurement Focus and the full accrual basis of accounting. So, this is very similar to how a private company would present its consolidated financial statements. Also, this takes a very, very long-term perspective as to how the city is financed. Your other financial statements take a very, very short-term perspective as to how the city is financed. Notice you have four columns here on pages six and seven. You have your governmental activities, which is the general fund, and all of your other governmental funds, such as the motor fuel tax fund. The second column, business-type activities, is your water and sewer fund. The total column, then, is a consolidated total for the city as a whole. And then the last column is your discreetly presented component unit, the Idaho Public Library, presenting them in their own column, in their own set of numbers. One number I'd like to point out to the mayor and the members of the council is on page number seven. If you look at the second page up from the bottom line, that unrestricted deficit. In the current year, you reported deficit of about $26 million in your government activities and a positive figure in your business-type activities. I wanted to focus on that deficit figure for just a moment, because again, this is taking a very, very long-term perspective on the city. What's comprising that deficit? Your police pension fund had about a $14 million net pension liability. The fire pension fund had about a $12 million net pension liability. IMRF had about a $3.4 million net pension liability. And then your other post-employment benefit, remember, we said that new liability that came on this year, that was at about $8.2 million. So, you have these very, very long-term liabilities stretching out 20 to 30 years in the future. But yet, from an accounting standpoint, we're required to account for those as the benefits are earned by employees today, regardless of how you, the employer, funds those benefits in the future. When you take all those and total them up, that's about $37.5 million in liabilities right there. If you back those long-term liabilities out, you'd actually be sitting at a surplus of about $11 million. So, that is exactly what is driving that deficit, and you're unrestricted net position. And it's no different than any other major city here in the state of Illinois that has a police or fire pension plan, or the state of Illinois itself, when you look at the state and the state's pension plans and the challenges with their pension plans. So, I know, Mr. Mayor, at the conference that you were at this last week, pension consolidation was a major topic of discussion there.
Yes, sir, it was.
It'll certainly be interesting to see what might happen in the future to assist local governments in dealing with some of the pension issues that they're certainly dealing with. So, but again, once you back that out, the city's in a pretty good financial position from a long-term standpoint. So, again, just monitor those actuarial valuations and make sure that you're finding what the actuary recommends to those plans. If you turn with me to the next pages, pages eight and nine, if any resident ever comes and asks you that burning question, what is the total cost of providing services to us as constituency? That's the number that you see in the very first column on page number eight. So, if you follow that column called expenses, or I'm sorry, called expenses, and follow that down to a line called total primary government, that is a consolidated total cost of providing services to your constituents of $26,865,000. That's not your operating cost, that's not your budgetary cost. Instead, that's the total cost, taking into account these very, very long-term operating liabilities, depreciation on capital assets, as well as other long-term aspects of the city. Another key figure I'd like to bring to your attention is the fifth line up from the bottom of page number nine. So, if you look at page number nine, go to the fifth line up, and that's called change in net position. This tells a reader, is the city economically better off or worse off as a result of the transactions entered into in this last year? And you can see, you did have a decline in your change in net position of about $800,000 for government activities and about $750,000 for your business-type activities. Again, the majority of that is related to recording that long-term liabilities, both from the pension standpoint and the retiree health standpoint in the current year. If you look two lines below that to the line called change in accounting principle, and you see a reduction in total of $4.6 million, that is from the implementation of GASB Statement 75 and recording that liability. Now, I know you're probably gonna say, well, Fred, you just said that liability was $8 million. We only see a change here of about 4.6. You had already accrued a liability of about $3.4 million. So, all we did was take off the old liability and replace it with a new total liability of about $8 million. So, that is something that's going to require an actuarial valuation on an annual basis. So, any of you have children that are in college and looking as to what to major, definitely recommend them to study the actuarial sciences. There's a huge, huge demand for actuaries right now, and not a whole lot of folks filling that demand right now. So, so, on the long-term perspective, city's doing okay, but definitely monitor your pension plans. If you turn with me to page number 10, page number 10 is a short-term perspective as to how the city is financed. This is your traditional balance sheet prepared on what we call the Current Financial Resources Measurement Focus and the modified accrual basis of accounting. If you look down at the bottom of the page, that second line from the bottom called total fund balances, I'd like to say that number is, how much do we have left to fund next year's budget after we've paid this year's bills? So, it's a very, very short-term budgetary focus number. The city ended up this year with about $10.4 million in fund balance in your general fund. It's a very, very good fund balance for the city. We measure it based on your unassigned fund balance, the third line up from the bottom, which is your $9.6 million. The city has a fund balance policy where you'd like to maintain a little bit in excess of three months of expenditures down in your fund balance. You've met that policy for the current year and are a bit in excess of that policy for your general fund as of April 30th, 2019. We're also pleased to report to the mayor and the city council that all funds ended up with positive fund balances. You did not have any funds that reported a deficit fund balance as of April 30th, 2019. Again, a very, very good short-term position to be in. If there's any accountants in the room, we can spend a little bit of time talking about page number 11, which is just a lot of debts and credits, but since I don't think anyone really wants to discuss that, we'll go ahead and flip to page number 12 then, for the sake of time. Page 12 is your short-term income statement. Remember, we said the previous income statement, that statement of activities, said what was the total cost of providing services to constituency? Well, this gives us a very, very short-term focus of, did we bring in enough cash this year to pay our operating costs in the current year? That's really what we're trying to depict here. Two key figures to look at here. The first is about two-thirds of the way down the page, you'll come to a line called excess deficiency of revenues over expenditures, and you had a positive number in your general fund of about $1.3 million. You transferred out money, about $934,000, over to the capital projects, and also transferred out some of these police special reserve funds into their own special revenue fund and out of the general fund, so it's a little easier to track the restrictive spending of those particular funds. That gave you a positive net change in your fund balance of about $395,000 in your general fund. Again, a very, very good increase in your fund balance in the current year, and a overall healthy fund balance for the city as of April 30th, 2019. Flipping a couple of pages past that to page number 15, I'm sorry, page number 16. Page number 16 is your statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position for your water and sewer activities. So, again, this takes a very, very long-term perspective as to how you're financed. Couple of key figures to note here, your operating income loss about halfway down the page is about $432,000. Your change in net position, which is about five lines up from the bottom, is at about $751,000 from a drawdown standpoint, as we looked at a few moments ago. That's on a full accrual basis. A lot of our clients always say, well, Fred, can you tell us what it's like just from a cash-in, cash-out, just like we saw in the previous statement? If you turn to the next page, page 17, it gives you your same look, financial look at your water and sewer activity, except this is just cash-in and cash-out. So, again, this is a very, very... So again, this is a very, very short-term perspective. Remember, we said you had an operating loss? Well, if you look at the first subtotal there, that's called net cash from operating activities, once you take depreciation out of the equation, you have a positive cash flow from your operations. What we always look at is we look at your positive cash flow from operating activities, and then any requirements from net cash from non-capital financing activities, and then any debt payments, such as your principal, retirement, and your interest paid. We always total up those numbers and want to see that as a positive number. As long as that stays as a positive number, that means you're bringing enough cash to cover your operating costs, plus to also pay your principal and interest on your outstanding debt. And you're certainly in that capacity now for your water and sewer fund. The next comment I had, Mr. Mayor, time permitting, is on page number forty-one of the document. This is your new note disclosure in the current year under note eight for other post-employment benefits. I did want to point out, under note eight B, the benefits provided, that's really what drives the equation for your, your other post-employment benefit liability. The city does pay for a portion of that, that net single coverage for most retirees, so that's where a good portion of that liability comes from. But also, you'll note in the second paragraph, also included in this is the Public Safety Employee Benefit Act disability component. So if you do have any placebo's, they're now calculated as part of this, or I'm sorry, as part of this retiree health insurance component. If you look at the bottom of page forty-one, your census information, as of April 30th, 2019, you had thirty retirees and beneficiaries that were receiving benefits under the plan, which is quite a significant number. And you had 116 actives who could receive benefits at some point in time in the future. And then at the bottom of page forty-one, we do note that the total O P E B liability at the end of the year was just shy of $8.2 million, $8,196,000. On the next page, page forty-two, just shows the change in that liability from where it was at the beginning of the year, the 7.6 million, the service cost and the interest cost that was for the benefits that were earned in the current year. And then you had benefit payments of just a little shy of $300,000 arriving for that, that end-of-the-year balance. The last comment I had, Mr. Mayor, is all the way back on page 128. I know, Mr. Mayor, in the past, we've talked about some unfunded mandates from the state, and on page 128 is another one of your unfunded mandates from the state, because you are now required to report this information, include it as part of your annual financial report, and have your auditors subject this to audit. What you see here is, remember I said you had a new consolidated year-end financial report, or otherwise known as a cipher? This is your now, your cipher now that gets filed with the state of Illinois and the Office of Management and Budget. You can see you expended about $923,000 of state funds, about $42,000 of federal funds. And then you see that other column, and this is not a joke, the state did not know how to capture the rest of information to tie this number back to your financial statements. They were going to require you to provide a whole laundry list of information. We came up with a technical term for them to, to come up with one number to tie this all out, and we said, "Why don't you just drop in a plug number there to tie this back to your audited financial statements?" And that's exactly what that is, that $26 million. That is just a plug number now to tie back to the audited financial statements. So really, it's just the first two columns that the state was interested in, but they wanted somehow or another to this, for this to tie back to your audited financial statements. So the state gave us that, that plug number to, to insert into that, so. That concludes the very brief presentation we've prepared for this evening's meeting, Mr. Mayor. We'd be happy to address any questions that yourself or the council members might have in regards to these documents.
Council, questions for Mr. Lance? Bottom line is, we're doing well. So, thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor.
You might find it edifying to also read the management letter that they publish for us, too, that sometimes has some information that I think you might like to know.
And on that topic, I think it's very good to see, Mr. Mayor, that in the back where we note the comments from the prior year, that the majority of what we've recommended in the prior year has been implemented by the city and the city staff, so always good to see that continual improvement, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Travel safely. I know you have another meeting to go to.
Thank you.
As foreign as some of that language is to all of us, this is a very necessary part of how we can present to the community what we actually do with the tax money that we collect. And we do an audit every year, and we have had a clean audit every year that I am aware of for quite some time. And so Becky, thank you for all the work that you do. One lady department right here that keeps the numbers right, so.
Thank you very much.
So, on to public safety unfinished business. We have an update on the traffic enforcement that was requested at Garfield and West Fifth Street. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you would, turn to your detailed memo included in your packets marked Traffic Enforcement Garfield and West Fifth Street. I will summarize the memo. Basically, on August 12th, it was discussed at the committee meeting what the appropriate action to address the traffic concerns at that intersection would be. It was determined that the police department would deploy the speed trailer, collect and analyze data, and determine if speed enforcement was necessary. Ultimately, we did deploy the speed trailer in the 100 block of West Fifth with a visible speed indicator of oncoming eastbound vehicles. Posted speed limit in that area is 25 miles per hour. The attached bar graph spreadsheet consists of ten days' worth of speed data from that location from August 14th to August 23rd. Each sheet shows an hourly breakdown. Each bar graph indicates how many vehicles were recorded as speeding in that hour for each day. This information was then disseminated to each of the patrol sergeants, who assigned officers to traffic enforcement at that, in that area over that time period. On the second page of the memo indicates the results of that traffic enforcement, which was thirty-five total details that were conducted with zero speed violations, number of traffic, traffic stops was zero, traffic tickets, zero, written warnings, zero, with a speed range of 12 miles per hour to 30 miles per hour. Community policing officer Tim Blankenship has been in contact with the original complainant to let them know what the results have been, and has been in constant communication with them, and they have been satisfied with what we have done to this point.
Thank you. Alderman Snow?
So when I'm looking at the graph, though, or, on all these pages, it has quite a few speeds, up to 35 is a consistent speed that appears to be reached in a lot of cases, and I'm just kind of surprised there wasn't any enforcement at all. I mean, not even a ticket through all the time if there was 35 occasions for the guys to be out there.
Yeah, the, the bar graph shows what the speed trailer had picked up. So with the officers being out there in the visible presence, people tend to obey the speed limit, so they're not necessarily going to see the same types of speed violations that the speed trailer may pick up. You know, we can't make people speed, and if, at a minimum, sometimes all we can do is hopefully deter the traffic violations, and that visible presence seemed to, to do the trick during that ten period, ten-day period.
Alderman Burke?
Well, I'd like to thank the chief and the police for doing this study in Brent initially. I guess I just, I just hate to see the Joneses walk away with nothing from this. They're just trying to keep their neighborhood safe, so I don't know what the rest of the council, if we had any ideas, if we want to, you know, they wanted a stop sign going east and west. I don't know if anybody had what we think we should do.
Director Anderson?
Well, I think actually when you see the results of the speed trailer, and keep in mind, the most glaring thing to me was on the study that it took in, for the speed trailer portion of it, a total of 34 cars for those 10 days that it was out there, 34 cars. So this tells you the traffic on that street is extremely low. And I think that what that provides the complainant is a reassurance, I believe, that it is safe, the, the numbers that we have, the indication, again, no accidents in the five-year period, so the warrants for a stop sign, especially changing the location of the stop sign from one set of streets, because right now it yields, and they want to go to stop. So if the council wants to change from a yield to a stop, that's not a big change that can be done, but when you're talking about changing a whole traffic pattern to change it from one direction to the other direction at an intersection, that is a major change, and I think the information that has been compiled indicates that the warrants or the reasoning or the thought process perhaps that they had is really not there.
Okay. Any other questions or comments at this time? All right. Yes, Alderman Burke?
So if we don't do anything on this, it's, are we just done with this? Okay, well, I'll make a motion to change the yield signs to stop signs.
Is there a second for that motion? Do I have a second? Any further question or discussion concerning? Very none, all those in favor? Signify saying aye.
Aye.
Porter, do you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask about, we talked about putting up slow children signs. Is there any more discussion on that? I mean, you said that we might have some of those in stock in the, you know, in the warehouse?
We don't have, we don't have children at place signs. We have some of the keep-alive, drive fifty, or drive 55, sorry, drive 25 signs when the city went, made the change for all the residential streets from 30 lowered it to 25. We do have some of those signs available. But again, you're talking a two-block section that may or may not help, but that would, that would be an option. But I think with, again, because you could place those 25 mile an hour signs all over town, I think you want to be somewhat careful in how you, how you post those. But again, we have some of those available.
And, and I'd like to make a comment here. We certainly stress safety on our streets, and there isn't a street in the city, stop signs or no stop signs, that doesn't have people that speed on occasion. I can testify to that, absolutely. The issue then becomes, as Brent has said, you start changing all the traffic patterns, you're creating more problems than you're solving. That's why we go through this lengthy process to find out we know what we're looking at. And, you know, you might remember, a few years ago, there was a lot of concern about Washington Academy and people speeding around there, and we had police officers there. We created as much safety as we could, and it ended up being, the solution was for the school district to open up the street so that people could pull in and go around the school. So, you know, I, I'm hesitant to be in favor of changing the traffic pattern, because there's a reason the state has warrants, and there's a reason why, yeah. Yes. Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, Brent, didn't you say changing what he asked for wouldn't really matter?
No, I mean, if you, we have existing yield signs now, and changing those yield signs to those stop signs in that same direction is not that big of a change, and that would be something that you could, you could do.
Is that what you asked for, Alderman?
Yes.
Is it all the stop signs in that whole corridor?
No, just the existing.
Just the one, how many signs are we talking about?
It's just, it's just the two signs. Right now, the existing intersection is a yield intersection, so the motion would be then to change those yield signs to stop in that same direction.
Okay. So we have a motion, a second. We've had discussion, all those in favor signify saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed. We'll report on the city council for final disposition. All righty. So next up, under Public Safety New Business, under A Fire, we have presentation. Firefighter Tangi is going to talk to us about what is called a compliance engine. I guess it's going to be the chief.
Hey, Travis, real soon. Travis, come on up. Counsel, I would like to introduce to you, to you our new inspection coordinator. He has taken over for retired Lieutenant Craig Wilcox back in the back there. This is Travis Tangi. He's a firefighter paramedic and also holds a lot of certifications in the area of inspections. Travis, months ago, came to me along with Lieutenant Wilcox, and they came to introduce a way to keep, help our department get a handle on the roughly 500 businesses that we have here in our city. We, as a department, have done a tremendous job with our multifamilies. We're making our multifamilies safer for everybody, including firefighters. Something has to give with calls for service rising, state mandated training on the rise, and public education. The businesses have not had the attention that they deserve. Travis is here tonight to introduce a program called Bryser. It's a compliance engine, and I understand our PowerPoint is not working, Mr. Drell?
Didn't know if I had it set up properly.
Okay. So anyway, we're going to go through pages. Kind of like the Sickich deal, but we'll do this here, okay? So Travis, after you.
All right, thank you, chief. Good evening, Travis Tangi, firefighter paramedic, also the new inspection coordinator for the department. Brought in by the chief tonight to just kind of discuss what we do as fire inspectors, what we haven't been able to do, some reasons why we think we haven't been able to do them, and one potential solution. If you guys wanted to just follow along, I'm going to go right off of that. So I wanted to start with just our organizational chart for fire inspectors. Currently, we have three fire inspectors. We work under, the fire chief is designees and fire code officials. What we do as fire inspectors, our, our priority is life safety. One of our big priorities has been our apartment buildings. Our on-duty crews inspect those, and that's annually. This is one of our highest life safety hazards, because that's where families sleep. So since 2017, we have re-inspected those as fire inspectors off-duty. After the third noncompliance, we hand that over to the city attorney and work with him on getting those buildings brought up to the codes that we've adopted in the city of Beldeere. We also do annual school inspections, another high life safety hazard. We do new construction plan reviews, as well as go out and do the inspections on those. We take in, if we take in a phone call, where we got fire crews go out and see a life safety hazard, we will follow up on them. The Freedom of Information Act, we take in requests. If any citizen has something, they want information on the building, they'll bring that into us, and we will get that information for them. Tier-two hazard chemicals, if a business has hazardous chemicals, they have to disclose that to the fire department. We track that information and get it out to our companies. And then our last one here, we got drop everything must come today requests, and due to the fact that we don't have any part-time or full-time fire inspectors, a lot of times it's the on-duty fire inspectors that may need to get out to a business and make sure they can get occupancy. So what we haven't been able to do, like chief said, the big one is getting into our businesses, and that's tracking, following up, or enforcing required maintenance of life safety systems. So those include, and they're listed there, fire sprinkler systems, fire alarms, private fire hydrants, kitchen hood systems, to just name some of them. So some reasons why we believe that we haven't been able to get to that. We currently have just seven guys on duty, so that's two fire engines and one shift commander and a buggy, and like I said, no part-time or full-time inspectors. We have one administration assistant, and she also has to deal with keeping 30 guys in line, so she is, she's got her hands full. We consistently respond over 3,000 calls for service a year, and I've listed some of the, the required trainings that we have, maintaining certifications, continuing education, structural firefighting, emergency medical services is roughly 75% of our calls, and it's hundreds of hours of recert every four years. You guys can go through them here. We, we're training more than we ever have, and it's, it's strapping our engine crews on duty just to do the company inspections of our apartment buildings. That's roughly about a month out of the year of training to have those crews go out, so, and we have well over 100 apartment buildings. So, one option on how we can promote fire and life, fire and life safety in our businesses with our current staff. with our current staffing levels, and that's to use a tracking company. The company would collect, organize, categorize, track, provide written mailed violation notices, provide follow-up phone calls, and notify the fire department of any discrepancies. And this would be for all of the required maintenance on life safety systems in our businesses. The company's name is Bryser, and what they provide is called the Compliance Engine. This collects and organizes third-party inspection reports of life safety systems. It will help us verify that the life safety systems are maintained and operational. It reduces administrative tasks, reduces false alarms. It is free for the city to use. The catch, there's always a catch, the third-party companies, the fire alarm businesses, the sprinkler businesses that go out and do these inspections, they will have to pay fifteen dollars for the reports that they submit. So for a fire alarm, that's an annual thing, it's once a year. So after they do the fire alarm report, they would have to submit that to this company, and it'd be fifteen dollars for the year. The next page lists the systems that are legally required to maintain. Like I said, fire alarms, sprinklers, stand pipes, fire pumps, essential life safety systems that keep the occupants of the building, the employees, and firefighters showing up on scene safe. Bryser did a study, it was over three thousand fire departments. They, they came up with forty percent of life safety systems are not inspected each year, and that roughly a third of the fire inspector's time is on these administration duties, such as the, taking in the inspection reports. An NFPA study was done on false alarms for the year 2016. Across the country, two point six two million, and about a third of those, they deemed due to lack of maintenance and testing. So the Bryser study, the same one that I talked about on the last page, put the average cost of a fire department responding to a false alarm anywhere from four hundred to over a thousand dollars. The Belvidere Fire Department, in the last five years, has went on over a thousand false alarms. So putting together those numbers, that would be almost half a million dollars in cost to respond. The last page, this is all the departments in Illinois that currently use this. It is over fifty across the country. There's over two hundred and fifty fire departments that use Bryser. Just to make a note of some of them that are pretty close to home, Freeport, Roscoe, Machesney Park, and Sycamore. So, but they're, they're all across the state. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you guys have about it.
Alderman Snow?
So when I see the dollar amount associated with the false alarms, do we as a city charge them when we come out for a false alarm, or what's the protocol there, and should we be securing that fundage?
Currently, we do not.
And I asked Mr. Drell, or the mayor, if they think we should pursue that, particularly, I'm assuming some of these people are repeat offenders, so maybe calendar year, they get the first one free, and the rest cost them significant?
We do have provisions within our code for false alarms, and those over a certain number, I can't recall what it is, can't get charged for that. I know they have that on the police side. I don't recall, but I think they may have that on the fireside as well, I'd have to check that. Quite frankly, you're usually not talking about a great deal of money, though, because you don't want to necessarily encourage them to turn their systems off.
Any other questions for Travis?
When, when you guys do come up with the dollar amount, for instance, the four hundred dollars a run or whatever, is that just based on the three guys going out, cost of some of the maintenance for the equipment in that, or where is that dollar amount?
Yeah, we're talking about, talking about fuel, we're talking about two engines on the road, the wear and tear on the engines. That's why it differs, a bigger department may have a bigger response in that, but in Belvidere, like you said, we got two engines going out on a fire alarm call, so we may be towards the bottom end of that. Department like Chicago, they might have two trucks, two engines, and a squad going out to that, so they may have a bigger response, it might be more costly for them.
Yes, Alvin Porter. Is that the fifteen dollar fee, is that per report, or is that just like a one-time yearly fee?
Yeah, so the company usually does, you know, the fire alarm company would do the one fire alarm inspection, so they would just have one fifteen dollar a year for the annual. If the company did a sprinkler and a fire alarm, then they would have to submit two reports.
Alvin Frank?
So this is for apartments and businesses?
This, this would be for, for businesses. Most of our apartments are grandfathered in, and there's very few fire alarm or sprinkler systems in our apartment buildings currently.
Okay, is there a way that we can recoup the money from the businesses if there's a report, or would they pay for it, or we pay for it?
So the city, the city pays nothing. So the, the company that goes out and does the fire alarm inspection, they either eat that cost, or they would possibly charge more for their inspection, but as far as the city is concerned, there's no cost.
Additional questions or comments? So are you looking for a motion to explore further, to approve?
To approve.
What was not, I don't think in the pack, it was a letter in the form of a contract from the corporation to the city. That would be the agreement with which to authorize entry into an agreement with them to provide the service. If the committee felt fit, they can make a motion to prove entry in agreement with
Bryser.
Bryser to provide the Compliance Engine services, that agreement with them being in your packets for City Council in, I think, two weeks, correct?
Entertainer motion to approve. Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alvin Porter. Additional questions or comments? Bearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's approved, and we forward to the council for further disposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Next, under B, Fire Hazmat Monitoring Equipment. We have a donation from General Mills Foundation Hometown Grant Making Program. Are you going to present the grant? Chief Hyver?
Thank you. In your packet, the Belvidere Fire Department is pleased to have been chosen to receive grant money from the General Mills Foundation Hometown Grant Making Program, and would like permission to accept a check in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. This check will be utilized for hazmat monitoring equipment, and will come out of our equipment budget. Line item zero one five two two zero eight two zero zero.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Crawford, second quarter. Questions, comments, or further discussion, starting the motion on the floor? Yes, Alderman Frank.
I'd just like to say that General Mills has done a lot for us, I'd like to thank them for that.
They sure have, and they are a great corporate partner for the community. So our motion is second, no further questions or comments. All those in favor, approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Under Finance and Personnel, unfinished business, there is none. Under Finance and Personnel, New Business, we have a gentleman from As of Our Governmental Solutions that will talk to us about the gas utility tax. Please come up.
Need a preface?
Sure.
So if you recall, it was probably about exactly a year ago, Scott was out here to talk about the findings from the audit that As of Our did for us, and one of those findings had to do with the gas portion of the utility tax, and how a substantial amount of funds that should be coming to the city aren't coming to the city because they are able to use entities that are outside of the state of Illinois, so they're bypassing having to pay the utility tax. So at that time, you weren't ready to move on it, we had just implemented a couple other new taxes, so we kind of pushed it off. So here we are, a year later, bringing it before you, just seeing what you want to do with it, if it's something you want to revisit and look into further or not.
I'm not sure I have anything else to add, I think you covered it pretty well. Thank you, Mayor Chamberlain. Council members, thank you for having me again. So as Becky said, I'm Scott Shamberg, I'm with As of Our Government Solutions. We had conducted revenue audits to make sure that the city of Belvidere was getting every penny it was due under its existing tax sources, and we found a, a large issue with what was being collected in the gas taxes. The issue here was that years ago, the state deregulated the, the energy market in gas, allowing for competition, which in theory is a very good thing, but one of the side effects of this was that the market became so dereguted that you could have outside gas suppliers, alternative gas suppliers, providing their services from overstate lines. As a result of that, it becomes interstate commerce, and is no longer subject to the municipal utility tax. So over time, what's happened is residents and businesses in Belvidere have been using these alternative suppliers, which is fine, but because of the way the state, the way the laws are written, there is, it created a loophole, and that loophole resulted in those residents and businesses no longer having to pay the municipal utility tax on gas. So you wind up with a two-tier system whereby some residents and businesses are paying gas utility taxes, and some are not. And so when we were conducting our audits, we noticed this problem because the, based on the industrial base and the size of Belvidere, we looked at the amount of revenues that were coming in from the existing municipal utility tax on gas, and they just weren't adding up. There was a, there was a large gap there. And so when we did a deeper dive, if you look on page three of the packet that I handed out, you'll see that seventy-five percent of the revenues that should be getting collected under the municipal utility tax on gas were not being collected. So to the tune of the fiscal years, you can see that it's roughly anywhere between nine hundred and fifty to as much as one point three million dollars annually. And of course, this can fluctuate depending on weather and price of gas, things like that will affect it, but you can see it's a significant amount of revenue that is slipping through the cracks due to this loophole. So what we had proposed to fix this, there is a fix that can be done, there is an ordinance that can be passed to close loophole, a gas use tax, and what that will do is it will tax the use of that gas that is coming from overstate lines in Belvidere. And so any resident or business that is utilizing that service will then pay the gas use tax instead of the gas utility tax. Those that are paying the regular utility tax will not be subject to it, so it closes the loophole without instituting any additional payments by the, the residents and businesses who are paying the municipal utility tax. So essentially, this will close a loophole. We estimated that in 2017, it would generate additional nine hundred and ten thousand dollars for the, for Belvidere, and I don't have updated numbers for what it would have been in 2018, but I can certainly get that, but I imagine it would be a little bit more due to the cold winter that was, that was had that year. So if you have any questions?
Was there any way that you could, you were able to break out, I didn't see it in this report, and I just missed it, that, how much of it was residential?
We don't have access to that. Unfortunately, NICOR will not reveal that information, they consider it customer-specific, so they won't share that, so we don't know.
We do know, though, the lion's share of it is our industrial users.
Yes.
And part of the reason that this has kind of not moved forward for a year, it was thought that it would be a good idea to sit down with our big users like FCA, General Mills, and at least give them a heads up that this was coming, which we have a manufacturers' roundtable scheduled, scheduled for the end of the year, but, you know, realistically, this is a million dollars that these folks haven't been paying, that we could sure use to do some other things in the city. So we appreciate the work, and we appreciate in our other utilities how you found money for us. So you're looking for a motion to approve going forward, the agreement?
Not at this point, no.
What do we want to do tonight?
I think we'd want to do is simply direct the city attorney to finish drafting the ordinance, which is route to the municipal to do. I got most of it drafted, as well, there's actually two components, the council will have to adopt an ordinance establishing the gas use tax, that ordinance actually exempts those that are paying the state-imposed taxes that are on the books, as well as enter into an agreement with NICOR to actually collect the tax for us. They provide, they have agreed to provide, because they don't have to, collection services for municipalities, we have to enter an agreement with them, they get a small percentage for, for engaging in those activities, and they would collect the tax remit, that to the city. So that agreement, I'd have to look at again, I obviously did this work about a year ago, but I'd want to look at it again, and update it, and get to the council for review, probably at the next committee of the whole meeting, and then take it to council. So requires two things, one, the ordinance, and second, the resolution approving the agreement with NICOR to do that. Please keep in mind that while the numbers you've heard of approximately nine hundred thousand dollars, that's the gross amount that the city could see for, I believe it's about five years, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe it's three years, a portion of that then goes back to As of Our.
Thirty-six months.
As, as essentially their finder's fee for this money. This is, this is, the possibility these taxes have been known to the city for quite some time, but they brought back to our attention after we retained them. So they get, I think that's what, forty percent?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Of the, of the fees on the front end for the first thirty-six months.
And that's, and we're strictly contingent fee-based, so if our services are only based on that, there's no other upfront costs.
Unless we get the money, they don't get paid.
Essentially, yes.
Would you like to have a show of hands for those who want you to go ahead?
Simply direct the, motion to direct the city attorney to draft the ordinance, as well as the agreement with NICOR gas.
Okay, a motion by Alderman Snow.
I'll second it.
Second by Alvin Crawford. Other questions or comments? Alderman Snow?
And if he already has a draft of an ordinance, do we want to go ahead and approve that draft unseen and get it into the first reading?
You can certainly do that if you want. They'll come back, they'll come back to you for first reading in two weeks, essentially.
We're going to lose another two weeks on that.
And, and quite frankly, NICOR has, and I don't, I'd have to look at the documents, I haven't seen them in at least a year, they want you to adopt it by a certain point, and then they'll implement, usually it's a January one, I think.
Yeah, so they'll, what, what they'll do is, once you, they want to know ahead of time when you're going to pass it, just so they can set it up in the system and get it programmed. And they usually ask for about sixty to ninety days to give them enough time to implement it. So if you, if you put an implementation date of the date it's passed, they, they'll reject it, and they won't collect it. So you just have to make sure that you give them enough heads up.
So just moving ahead, and as we are, we'll before participate. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sounds unanimous to me. And thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, thank you, council members.
Under B, we have acceptance of First United Methodist Church, General Mills Park donation. Anybody here to? Yeah, do you want to?
So what you have before you, the Methodist Church was so kind to actually basically pick up the remaining balance of what was left and had not been funded by a different grant or, or a gift of any sort for the parks. So what you're seeing before you is the remaining balance. So with that check, we can now say that General Mills Park was completely funded by donations, grants, sweat equity, you name it, so, and it came to just over fifty-one thousand total that we've spent at the park so far.
Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Crawford, second by Radcliffe. Questions, comments, or further discussion concerning the motion on the floor? Bearing none, all those in favor, second by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Unanimously approved. Under C, Sickich, we did that, yay! Under other, under number seven, special use application, three hundred South Main. Alderman Frank?
Yeah, I'm requesting a motion to waive the special use application fee for three hundred South Main. It's because the applicant's already paid those fees for a business that he was going to operate or open, that now he's going to be doing a different business, but he's already paid the fees, so it's generally just moving the application fee to the other project.
Is that a good summary, Gina?
Yeah, basically, I think it was 2017, he Yeah, basically, I think it was 2017, he applied for and was granted a special use for planned development for a restaurant that would also have a bear garden to allow, you know, music, drinking, activities such as that. The special use he's requesting now is for a container park, which is not a, it's not really like a permanent development. So he wants to do this until he figures out what permanent development he's going to do. So the special use this time is for a planned development for, you know, the outdoor entertainment, bear garden, music, and the use of containers themselves as buildings, because our code does not allow that. So the, you know, about half of the stuff he's requesting has already been granted in the previous one. The biggest difference now is the building style going from a brick restaurant to the container park. So he's asking for those fees be waived because he's already paid for the first one, and he believes that this special use is extremely similar and feels like he's paying twice for the same thing.
And I would add to that, this is a gentleman who has put an awful lot of effort and investment into downtown, and I can see his point, so may I have a motion to approve?
Is this for Russell Caldwell?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Well, I think Ms. Frank can make the motion. She brought it forward, so a motion by Ms. Frank.
Yeah, I make that motion.
Second by Alderman Crawford. Questions, comments, or further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed unanimously. And then, we will have our esteemed attorney give us a general overview of Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act, because we'll be taking this up soon for serious discussion.
I did put, or have the clerk put in your packets, a two-and-a-half-page bullet point brief memo on the subject. It really is the Cliff Notes version of the Cannabis Regulation and Tax Act that the state recently adopted, which is over 600 pages long. The majority of that 600 pages talks about how they're going to spend the money that the state hopes to gleam from the sale of cannabis and the growing of cannabis within the state of Illinois. A good chunk of that, however, deals with the regulation of the industry, as well as what local governments can do with respect to regulation of the industry. The first important note is that this 600-page statute does preempt home rule authority, so we are not free to act as we so choose with respect to cannabis. The act also does specifically state that all municipalities, including non-home rule, may legislate in the area so long as consistent with the act and not more restrictive than the act. In other words, if the act says that people can smoke pot, we cannot prevent them from smoking pot. So one of the things that the act does is it unilaterally states that anywhere in the state of Illinois, persons may possess and consume cannabis products below certain threshold amounts. The other thing it does say, however, is that they may not do so in public. They define public in a very bizarre way, which when you first read it, makes you think like you cannot consume it anywhere. And specifically what they say, for example, is that public is defined as any place where a person may reasonably expect it to be observed by others. When you first read that, you think of somebody sitting there in a closet, smoking their weed, because if they're in the living room, they might be seen by their wife, right? Well, no, they did say, with the exception of private residences. So, so long as, basically what they're saying is you can smoke it in a private residence, but pretty much nowhere else. What it doesn't say is what happens if you're on your front porch? Or in your backyard? Front porch is pretty easy. Somebody driving down the street, they might see you. Backyard, that you got a fence, is that private? Probably. But the kid next door jumping up and down the trampoline that's watching, you know, those are the kind of things where the act is somewhat, you know, not so clear on. But what is clear is you cannot be sitting on your canister, you cannot be walking down State Street, or sitting on the State Street Bridge like the old days and consume your marijuana. So those are the things, area where the city cannot regulate. It also provides for the ability to have retail sales throughout the state. Now, everybody got all excited, that means everybody's going to have a distribution center within every city in the, in the state, and that is not the case. So they actually tiered the implementation of the, of marijuana. In the first year, what the first thing they said is we're going to allow some early adopters in the sale of marijuana. Essentially, anybody that had a medical marijuana dispensary can be an early adopter. Obviously, there's no medical marijuana facilities within the city of Belvidere. The second thing they said is we'll issue an additional 75 licenses for retail sales in the state, but we're not just going to let it be willy-nilly. They actually allocated different areas in the state, those which would get one of the first 75 licenses. Belvidere and Boone County was not one of those areas. So in the first year, beginning 2020, we will not see a distributor, a distillery, not sorry, a distribution center within the city of Belvidere. The only caveat to that is if there's a medical marijuana facility that wants to open a satellite office in Belvidere, most people say they can't do that. There's a couple of medical marijuana places that are trying to play, put new facilities close to Iowa in the Quad Cities area, and they're looking at regulations. I don't think that's going to be allowed, but they may. Needless to say, Belvidere's not going to get a distribution center during the year 2020. During the, beginning of the year 2021, they're opening up a few more, and after 2022, they will allow even more retail distribution centers. They're capping the total number in the state right now at 500. They will not be awarded on a first-come, first-served basis. They have established criteria that they'll look at, including market, market density, how many are in the area, what the demand is like, things like that. So it's not going to be like video gaming where it's knocking down the doors and everybody's opening up. It's going to be much more restrictive than that was. One of the things the cities can do is we have the option, so-called, of opting out. The city could ban by ordinance the retail sale of marijuana within its corporate boundaries. If you do not affirmatively act to ban that, then it's presumed to be legal, so you'd be opened up for the possibility of having retail sales in a year or two down the road. The act very strictly regulates who can receive a license to distribute, how they can operate, the hours they can operate, how close they can be to another distributor, all those kinds of things. It also authorizes all municipalities to enact an additional 3% sales tax upon all cannabis products. That's above and beyond the current locally imposed sales taxes, as well as the state sales taxes. So you can tax an additional 3%. What is very obvious is the state is getting every ounce of money they can out of pot. They are taxing the growers. They are taxing the people that transport the marijuana from the grower to the distributor. They are taxing the distributor, they are taxing the transportation of the distributor to the retail sales, and they're taxing the retail sales. So obviously, the state's looking at this as a, as a money pit. We'll see if it is or is not. The other thing the city can do is they can, of course, enact reasonable zoning restrictions. We're going to allow retail sales, but only in these zoning districts, or not with the next number of feet of a church or place of worship, or not with the next number of feet of a school. Those are all things that we can regulate if we choose to, if we choose to allow dispensaries. We can also choose prohibit growers if we want to. There's going to be even fewer growers licenses issued than, than dispensaries, or we can allow them, and again, restrict the zoning on that. So the act is pretty, it really does limit what we can do with respect to the regulation of dispensaries and growers, with the caveat that we can change, we can affect the zoning, and we can prohibit it outright if we choose to. There are, of course, one area that everybody thought about, I think when they heard the concept of pot sales in Illinois, and that is sitting around a bar and smoking pot. Can't do it. Just can't do it. Can't use anywhere alcohol is sold, with the exception of minute tinctures. One thing that got shoved in the act at the very last minute and surprised everybody was the concept of pot lounges. A municipality may affirmatively allow, for lack of a better word, a pot lounge, as the one exception to the Smoke Free Illinois Act, as well as the Cannabis Act, that says you can't smoke it in public, and that as a municipality can allow a public consumption within a defined area, like a bar, but not in a bar, it'd have to be pot-only, for consumption on premises. If you don't effectively allow it, it's prohibited. Interestingly, one of the things I learned on, on a seminar I was at last week, don't expect to see those anywhere in the state of Illinois anytime soon, because they are practically impossible, because there isn't a single insurance company in the nation right now that will insure a pot lounge. You can't go out and buy dram shop insurance for pot. So that's, that's a non-starter for the foreseeable future, anyway. Employment issues, it opens a can of worms. Needless to say, I'll be coming to you with changes to our personnel manuals, as well as potentially eventually the collective bargaining agreements. While we have to allow the consumption of cannabis in private, we are perfectly able to continue our drug-free workplace policies, meaning while your employees might be able to go home and use cannabis, they may not use it on premises, nor may they use it, or may, nor may they be under the influence of cannabis while at work. And one of the interesting things that was in the act was specifically a section as to criteria that an employer can look at to make a determination whether somebody's under the influence of cannabis or frankly, other drugs. And it's almost a safe harbor in one respect, is if we take employment action, once we've utilized such criteria, we can deem them to be under the influence. Things that you can usually look at, whether it's lowering their speech, how they're behaving at work, whether they're being clumsy, things like that. Bloodshot GLCIs, those kinds of things, and making that kind of decision. So we cannot prohibit our employees necessarily from using cannabis, however, we can't prohibit them from being under the influence at work or using at work. The one area that's really kind of out there, and our employees need to be wary of, is if they hold a federal license, or a license that's governed by federal law, for example, a commercial driver's license, federal law still makes it illegal to be under, to use cannabis. And if they test positive, they might lose that license. And if they, if they lose that license, they may no longer be eligible for employment with the city. So that's something we have to make sure that our employees know, because we can, of course, affect federal law. That's just a quick summary of the statute. I think what the mayor would like to do in the future is have a discussion as to what the city's position is going to be with respect to the sale of cannabis at dispensaries, or the growing of cannabis at grower locations within the city, and how we want to regulate that or tax that.
Two things. This was a good presentation. We have a lot of material. We have more material. If you want to really delve into it, we'll, we'll get you the 600-page report, if you want to go through it. Moment, please. Secondly, following that, if you have other questions, please call the city attorney and ask him specifically what, which questions are. Alderman Porter?
I was just curious, that if we specifically prohibit it, does that also prohibit medical marijuana sales then, too?
Well, dispensary sales, if practically, even if it didn't practically, it would, because I don't think you're going to see very many medical marijuana dispensaries opening up anymore, because you can go out and just buy it. The only place that I can think of where you really need a medical marijuana card anymore is, I didn't get into this, some of the early versions of the act allowed home grow. The act has adopted, specifically prohibits home grow, with one exception. If you have a medical card, you can grow up to five plants. For those of you that are currently growing, it is still, it's still prohibited to grow your own if you don't have a medical card, however, if you have less than five plants, it's now a civil fine of $200. Well, as of January 1, it will be.
And no taking plans?
Yeah.
Alderman Crawford?
Yeah, I was just curious from the city attorney's point of view, with the taxes coming in on it, why would we opt out of it?
It would be a policy call by the city council as to whether it wants to support or not support the consumption of cannabis, keeping in mind that if we don't have a dispensary, we're getting nothing. If we do get a dispensary, obviously you get 3% on their sales, but I, that's, that's a policy call for the council, whether or not they want to support the consumption.
At the time we go into a formal discussion on this, law enforcement will make a presentation. We'll have the health department make a presentation, while all the concerned people in the community get a chance to speak their piece. I think medical marijuana has its place. Absolutely. The idea, the dispensary idea is something that you'll have to decide. The chances of us getting dispenser or remote to begin with, but there is that possibility in 2022 that we may be considered for that, so that may be something that we can take up at that time. But this is a big issue, and there's, there's a lot of different opinions about it. I think we want to make sure that we have a thorough discussion, allow everybody to express their viewpoint, and then before we make a decision.
In theory, we could get one as early as 2021, but again, they've limited the number they're going to issue at that point, and it will be on a, not a first-come, first-served basis, again, it'll be on a market analysis basis and population basis. You know, for example, in the first year, they're issuing 75 additional licenses, 47 of them are going to the city of Chicago. The rest are getting split up around the state.
So it looks like Winnebago County, you know, and if they start dealing those out. But we'll, we'll take it as it comes, and we'll have a good discussion. Anything else for the good of the order this evening? Hearing nothing, I'll entertain a more.
Alvin's going to say.
One of the bullet points on the first page, three-quarters of the act prohibits the sale of cannabis at the location where alcohol is sold.
Right.
But doesn't that still mean that a bar could be a place for cannabis?
No, they, no, you cannot do it. You cannot consume cannabis anyplace where there's alcohol being sold or consumed like that.
Because it just says sale of cannabis.
Like I said, this was bullet point summary. Right. No, that would, and frankly, if we were to allow it, we wouldn't allow it, so.
Anybody else? All those in favor, adjournments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. We had a lot of stuff to cover tonight, and appreciate your patience.